At six thirty, I'm calling this meeting as the Joshua City Council. We do have the board present. We are online. It is being recorded. Anybody who's online, if you'd like to comment, there's a comment button that will go to the city secretary. She will let us know what's going on. We're gonna start with our pledge of allegiance this evening. Angela Nichols is gonna lead us in the pledge, and then we're going to have our invitation by Lisa Lerner, the Chaplain of the Rosewood Police Department.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Father, we thank you for this evening, God. It's time to come together and acknowledge you and the privilege of your presence with us. Father, I think as these city leaders have acknowledged and invited you in for wisdom, for understanding, for guidance, and all the things and how they navigate the city for the safety of those that dwell within it. Father, I pray that you would give them favor for everything that their hand touches, God, that you would give them a new understanding and a new knowledge of how to make this city the best for those that live in it, those that work in it, and those that have businesses within the rounds of this city. And Father, I just pray that they would have one mind and one accord, that they would have understanding of each other and different ideas and different ways of doing things, but would all be in unity and harmony. Father, as this city grows, I pray, Father, that you would put your hand upon this place, God, that it would prosper and that you would watch over it. So, Father, I thank you for the honor of all of us that have it before you, as this city has invited you. And before they discuss and before they make decisions and as they lead this city where it's going, Father, I pray that you reward each step and each way that they reach out in acknowledgement of you and the guidance, Father. And, Father, I just pray for safety and security. Pray, Father, you show yourself strong over this city and over each leader that prevails in their different areas and their different places. And, Father, we honor you, we acknowledge you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Lucy, thank you.
Thank you for the privilege.
Before we move into our regular session, I would declare the mayor's privilege. We're gonna do something really special first. As y'all know, we had a wonderful part of that. While I'm here signing up, I was in a few people that ended up canceling, but there were over forty-five people, children, and children out there. Four elected officials happened to be there, myself, Mr. Brightenstein, Ms. Nichols, and Mr. Walter down there. And Johnny really sacrificed himself going into that poison ivy, which he's highly allergic to. So, we were a little bit concerned about Johnny, but he came back and he went back to work. We had several of our employees show up, besides the two ladies who actually planted, Allison and Amber Meyer. And we are just blessed to have those two on staff with us. But our admin, our assistant city manager, Amber was there, Erin from Developmental Services, Michael from, or Michael Michelle.
Michael.
Michael, Michael from Developmental Services and Officer Gage from our code enforcement. We had several local churches that were involved, and we had eight different local businesses, including the Chamber and the Alice's Cafe up here that showed up. There was a lot of work done, trash, I don't know how many bags of trash we ended up hauling off. It was amazing. They scrubbed the restrooms, painted them, replaced house holders and so dispensers that were gone, and they put up two water fountains out there. The benches around the pavilion with the, and the splash pad were all washed and cleaned real well and restained, and they look like they're branded. I mean, it's awesome what all they did out there. They planted some nice plants around the restrooms, around the Veterans Memorial. We had tree trimming done by Star of the Stride Tree Services. They trimmed a lot of the limbs back, especially on the walking trail, we got them back away so people weren't having to dump the branches as they went past. The concession stands at the ballpark was scrubbed and cleaned, and they were smart, man. They did a fantastic job. And there's a lot of weeding done, and Johnny was trying to cut a path back through this one pile where there's a bunch of trash, and that's where he got to the poison ivy. There's a lot of things not done. There's still a lot that needs to be done, and hopefully we'll be planting another one soon. I'm saying all this because the two ladies who put this together, Allison and Amber, did such an excellent job. And I think it's important that we recognize when people go above and beyond what their normal duties are. So, Amber, if you and Allison come forward, we've got a little plaque for y'all, presentation to make to you, as appreciation from the city for what you did to make our part of their space. Part of this was also going to include the movie in the park, which didn't get to come up because it's hard, which, hey, that's what makes the get the rankings to more often. But they have worked so hard, and we've got this nice little plaque, and those say the same things, it has your name on it. But it says, "It's a service award presented to Amber and Allison for your tremendous efforts and dedication to the citizens of Joshua by creating and organizing. It's your part of that." And we also wanted to present each of you differently. So, you guys would ask the job. Okay, first item on the regular session. You discussed questions related to the financial state of 2022.
There's a, of course, you have the stuff in front of you. Some of the highlights are, you'll see some overages and undrages to some areas, grants and revenues. That number is up as a result of some donations that were made to the animal shelter above what was budgeted, and then a thousand-dollar donation that I think was received for the movie in the park and to fund that. And then the miscellaneous revenue is still showing up. That is the three hundred and one, three oh one point two four percent is the one hundred and five thousand dollar vehicle buyback when we started the enterprise program. And so those numbers are showing as overages, and then we'll clean those up at the end of the year. Expenditures, there were probably the biggest thing that stand out as a non-departmental, the miscellaneous expenditures from unrestricted reserves. That's where we pay the three eighty agreements that we have. So, those are done about the same time each year annually. Twenty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars went to Orco International. The TIF payback to the developer for their percentage was just over eighty-two thousand. And so those things all showed up. They show up as unrestricted reserves out of non-departmental, so those are done annually. And we don't, we don't ever know what that number's gonna be until we get it from the tax office, so it's kind of hard to budget for them. There's two other miscellaneous things. Most of it centers around the enterprise buyback program, and as that gets broke down, that will balance out at the end of the year where they took some of our newer vehicles, bought them from us to put them into this program. The park outlet, there was no funds set aside for vehicles there, and we did replace theirs in this program also. So, we'll clean that up when we do an amendment with the park budget. And the capital outlet that's there was, we found it was able to make a pretty good purchase on the Gator, similar to the one that was stolen. It's a newer model. The insurance company just paid us part of that, and then we made up the difference, so we bought that to put that back in the park. You have any questions or anything else we have to take?
Why don't you answer the question I have?
And this is a very nice gate, by the way.
It is. I'm thinking about having it wrapped blue and taking it away from them, doing something else.
So, we're going, item two is discussing gift directions staff regarding detention-based management practices.
So, we have an ordinance that requires onsite detention for certain developments. Larger residential developments typically have much larger detention ponds, and as those start to be built, what we have not addressed is the maintenance of. It doesn't do as much good to require them if we're gonna let them fill up with silt and brush and trees, and that's kind of what we're starting to see. So, mosquitoes, and it's just looking messy. So, we're, Kristen, what we're looking for is, what we'd like to do is amend the existing budget, I'm sorry, budget, amend the existing ordinance to put in place a maintenance standard so that code enforcement, gives code enforcement the bat to make them clean these things up, mow them, so that they can be used for why they were designed. And right now, we don't have anything that requires that.
If I have any questions?
So, the ones that you put in the pictures here, are these owned by the city or are they owned by the businesses that build it?
The city typically does not own them, and we don't, we own a couple. We own the one in Cooper Valley, and we own the one in Joshua Station, the big one. We maintain that. We're fixing to redo the one in Cooper Valley to get rehab it, get it up and running and right. These other ones are privately owned, and they're required by ordinance to catch runoff water, so it's to prevent flooding downstream.
So, the one that's, the first one that's down by the entry side, the main street, Route one seventy-four, that one, who does that belong to?
The bat.
That's none of this building, the bat.
Yeah, and then the other one is the one beside O'Reilly's.
Yeah, that O'Reilly's has got a huge tree in it.
Yeah.
Those are mosquito heaven right there.
We've had, O'Reilly will get around to getting a boat, it just takes a while, but we need something that's got some bats so that code enforcement can just move them up a little bit.
He found a maintenance guideline from another city that basically tells them what type of vegetation is best for those, and it also talks about mowing heights, because they're really not meant to be mowed short, because it does deteriorate the ground below it. So, he wants to put in some specifications more detailed than what currently here as well, so.
Are additions, new additions, are they required to put in the retention or detention pond?
Yeah, well, depending on the size of them, but most of them, yes.
So, it is on the size?
Yes, based on the amount of runoff that's anticipated, so they gauge them that way.
Yeah, it'd be good to have.
We also, and we also require those developments that have those, they have to have an HOA also, so that they can maintain them and have somebody mow them and take care of them. So, we, we'll bring something. If, if you're open to it, then we'll get something put together, an amendment to that ordinance, and probably will, I think probably it's best, but with our stormwater maintenance plan, you know, we can incorporate it into that, and then we'll, we'll get some wording. We'll pick out a few that look good and work and that we can adapt for ourselves.
Well, I have no problem going with the change to the ordinance or new ordinance, whatever we need to do. The only thing that I'm concerned about are, like, the bats are replicating the new business, and are they, we gotta give them some grace to take care of it. We can't just take the ordinance and then go after it.
He's been working on them quite a bit.
Yeah, and we will. We're not, most of them know that we're working on this stuff, and there's been some that we've gone in and knocked down the big stuff for them, and then they've taken care of the smaller stuff. We'll work with all of them. We just, we don't have the staff to maintain all of them, you know, the one in Joshua Station's six acres, I mean, it's a big one, and we, we just, we don't have, we can't take care of all of them. But we'll help them get them right. We just need to get them, we need something to get them to work with us.
I think that's one of the biggest concerns is the mosquitoes. That one and that area has been an issue with, and they'll treat it, but it's not being treated frequently enough, so.
So, anybody else? So, without objection, then we'll let you go ahead and get that wrapped in, and we'll see if it's not.
Very well, thank you.
Okay. We're gonna skip item number three, we're in April till next month. Kristen could be here, and he's been doing a lot of research on this, so we're gonna get a chance to present that. Going on to item number four, discuss and receive that data regarding training on critical listeners by the Joshua Police Department. Chief?
I'm not sure if this is really for discussion. I asked the chief to put together just a brief kind of memo to you guys about school shootings and things like that. That's a hot topic right now. They're working on some joint training exercises. He just put this in here, it's for information only, but certainly if you have questions, I'm sure we can address them.
We are working with the Joshua ISB Police just training.
I can just say, over, as the bird receptive and as recent, recent events, this superintendent has become significant for our community, allowing us access to facilities to conduct some training. That stuff is in the works. I don't know if it's been, we're working with them and us to find the neutral times, evaluations, do some law clues. In addition to that, I've got some officers going next month to do some active shooter training as well, and then we'll bring that back. And then as that training becomes available, we'll try to rotate all the officers back there. Every officer has it, but it's certainly.
One of the, one of the concerns too should be that y'all are on the same page with response, who's in charge, where to go, what to do, you know, communication, and having it at a fingertip and be, you know, done before you need it.
The MOU provides for that. It allows, we are the first, we are the primary responder to that, assuming the incident takes place within the surveillance. If it does take place, that's out of the world, so that's what we're gonna go anyway, that's gonna be accounted by response. The MOU also allows for me to be in the incident commander until I'm relieved by some school district. So, one arrival, you know, my, me or my designated, we're seeing incident command in that situation, run that situation as our school district, provide someone they're gonna take to provide that. So, that stuff is all part of that MOU that we have.
Stay ahead of it. Well, kind of while we're on the subject, you know, we're gonna do the training at the schools and everything, but what about our city employees in the buildings that they're in? Do we, do we have a plan, and do we, we have active duty training for them as well, or can we establish that?
We did some active shooter training for some of the staff. It's been a few years ago. We did it with one of the local churches, I think Sergeant, right at the time, and somebody from the SO came down and did, it's probably something that I wouldn't mind doing again.
I think we need to.
It's been several years that it was done, so we can work with the chief and see, see what we can find out.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? All right. Right ahead. So, we're now in the public forum. Does anybody have anything to add and say in the public forum? Nobody there? Moving right on. Okay, consent agenda. We're in the discuss, consider, big possible action on the meeting minutes from May sixteenth and May nineteenth, twenty-two. Both have a motion by Mr. Kidd and a second by Ms. Nichols. Any discussion? No discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, we got a couple bearers on the minutes. Yes. On the three, the five sixteen minutes, that was the meeting in the chemist's booth. They actually say on there that the meeting was done by Mayor Kennedy. I was not mayor at that time. So, that's going to be corrected. On the nineteenth, down item F there, we were doing the consent agenda there as well, and it had Mayor Halloran and the members of the council currently, and that had already changed by that point in time. It's important that we look at these documents that we get at the time, so that we can help our city secretary make sure that the city history is correct and complete. So, please be, please be reading your packets, looking at them. That's, that's very important. All right? So, moving on to the regular agenda items. Oh, I'm sorry.
And is it okay, are you gonna amend your motion to approve with corrections?
Yes. So, all those in favor of the amended motion? Say aye, raise your hand. Six zero? Okay. All right. Our regular agenda, let me just discuss, consider, and possible action on approving the expenditures of thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars to Johnson County for chip sealing, the extension of wagon wheel, Mr. Kidd.
We've reallocated some funding that we were gonna use on a couple of different streets that we, we've actually put off a couple of projects, because the cost of asphalt has just gone through the roof. When we budgeted and estimated the jobs, it was sixty-one dollars a ton. Now, it's ninety, I think, two dollars a ton, and it was, there were things that, that the money could be better used on rather than pull away from those projects. So, this is one that'll be presented to redo, resurface wagon wheel, redo a couple of base figures in there that our guys are doing, and then the county will come in and chip seal that. It'll be covered in existing funds, so it's not a, it won't be an additional expenditure. We'll cover it with current street maintenance funds.
Chip seal, is that?
Yes. This'll be, we've done, I think, seven streets so far. This will be the eighth one. I think, I think there's even more coming. We've had several, we had a private company doing some, and then the county's gonna do wagon.
They are gonna repair the base?
Yes.
If you know what you're gonna have the same problem next year.
Yeah, 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 we've, and I think most of it has already been dug out, repacked in, and they're, they're not quite ready for it yet, but they're, they're getting there. Potholes will be fixed, but there's a few base figures I'll have to dig up, and we'll do that. I'm sorry, which one? I don't know. It's on the CIP list. I don't know where it is on this year's stuff. Could be, I don't wanna speak out at her. Kristen could tell us, but he had a little emergency come up, could be here. Yeah, I know there's quite a few that are on there, and I'm just not sure where in line they are.
Anybody else?
The price is, considering the capital cost is not that bad. Surprisingly, I just hate the fact that we pay taxes and spend that paper.
You and me both.
I mean, I'm not accustomed to that. I'm.
We're hoping that that's something that will change in the future.
Yeah. Elections do that.
Sound a little, I'm not a radar.
Yeah, it's not a bad price.
I did notice on the Commissioner's Court agenda this week that they had an item on there to suspend or cancel all interlocal agreements for roadwork. I appreciate one. Ooh. Due to the increased costs and so on for the road maintenance, is that something that's gonna affect what we're trying to do here now?
No, because we're, we're paying for these materials, so we'll.
They, they were paying, all they were doing was the labor, and they were gonna cancel them because of the increased cost of labor and, I guess, fuel and so on.
I don't know, which one is precinct one?
Bailey, yeah. Bailey's three. Three is, was strength.
Yeah. Is it Kenny Howe?
No, he's two. I believe precinct one is.
I'm not, I don't have a say on which one.
It's on their local agreement, which was for each precinct.
Yeah.
Paid point six.
So, Bailey is one, Kenny's two, Mike White three, Willie four. So, so, well, precinct one's not going anywhere. Now, if it change, I mean, if it comes back and they can't do it, fine, because typically they want it approved here first, then we send a check with this, and then they approve it. But we'll reach out to them and verify that before we send any money.
Make sure we call Mr. Willie.
Well, actually, they'll be reimbursed, because they've already got ninety thousand dollars that we canceled.
Okay.
The asphalt, so we'll double check before we send it off.
Okay. I noticed that on the agenda, this thought might be worth mentioning at this point.
But this is not being done by the county, this is being done by a separate entity.
No, wagon wheel's being done by the county.
By the county?
By the county. Just the chip shell portion of it. Everything else, we're fixed. We've asphalted that turn, dug all that out, re-did the base, re-asphalated it, and then we're gonna put chip shell over the whole street.
So, when will they start that project?
Well, depending on if they do it further, once they get this done, approved, they'll do it. We'll get a start, and I don't know what is time for this.
Any more questions? And do we have a motion to approve the, so interlocal agreement and authorize city manager?
Move to approve.
And the second, Mr. Walter moved, and Mr. Brian Stein seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Raise your hand. Six zero. Okay, item number two, discuss, consider, and possible action on accepting the team of Randall Scott Architects and J.D. Dunn Destruction, request for qualifications and authorization of the city manager to negotiate contract with professional services.
So, the response to the RQ that we put out related to the possibility of a new police city hall facility, a combined complex. We had ten responses, which, not bad for a city this size, actually pretty good. Several of the people were known to us. We selected a group of people to review the qualifications and score them on a tabulation sheet. We had the mayor do one. Amber did one, I did one, Allison did one, who else? Erin, I think there was six of us total. We took the combined scores, we selected the top three and brought them in for in-person interviews that were much of that team, and then we added, well, actually, I think you tallied some up too, didn't you, Shelley? You didn't, you just came to the interviews. So, we had two council members, the mayor and Shelley, in interview process, along with myself, Amber, Vince. Vince, we also had scored, and we did the interviews, and then we narrowed down, we had two that we were, we could go either way. They were so close and had such good presentations. So, then we looked at, were there reasons not to use them, which we could not find, and so we then went on someone that we had a history with, Randall Scott Architects designed the fire station that we have. He probably looks like designs more city hall complexes than probably any other architect in the state. They're all over, and even nationwide now. The, we asked for a design-build team, because when we built the fire station, we hired the people separately, and we got a contractor that oftentimes didn't see eye to eye or wasn't conveying information to the architects, and it got into material issues. It really got to be an ugly process. It came through it okay, the building got. process. It came through it, okay, the building got finished and, and we're very happy with it. Um, so this time, we wanted people making presentations who already had teams they worked with. They already get along. Um, communications are open, they, they're used to working with each other. J.E. Dunn, although they have not done any work here, they've done a significant amount of work in municipal facilities. Uh, they work exclusively, um, with Randall Scott. Uh, they were both in attendance at the meeting, both had very nice presentations. We have conveyed to them, uh, very directly, um, that we are not looking for, um, a building that's probably gonna make the cover of a magazine. Um, we want it to be functional, uh, we're more interested in what's on the inside than on the out. Uh, we've made that a bonus. Randall, um, is very imaginative in his designs. Um, and we will have to pull him back some, uh, he, because he, he designs a lot of high-end stuff, but he also does more functional stuff for you know, for us, for smaller cities. We will start, we're gonna make a road trip, uh, maybe next week to look at the newest facility they just completed, that it is a city hall police facility. And we're gonna drive out, take a look at that. Um, I think we'll try and take Shelley, the people that were on the group, really anybody who wants to go, we'll, we'll try to get them there. Uh, take a look at it, and, uh, they're also, uh, doing a joint facility in Benbrook, a new complex for them, and that one's just now starting to turn dirt, so it's not built, but so we're gonna go, and I think Prosper, I think is where we're gonna go. Yeah, Prosper. Bigger building than what we're gonna build, but we'll be able to get an idea of some of the things. Uh, so we, this would be to, uh, accept their uh, proposal, and then we'll sit down and work out the, this'll actually be a two-step process. We'll need to uh, contract with them for the design and getting us ready for where we need to go as far as do we wanna run this a bond, do we want it to, you know, how, funding, and we just, we need to kind of figure out where the number is, where we're going. Uh, and then get an idea of, if we're gonna pursue a bond. Do we wanna do it? We can only do it in November or May. Quite frankly, I don't think we can, I don't wanna rush it so much for November, quite honestly. I would rather us take our time and get it right, and it may, might be more realistic. They say they can hit November. Um, I, I just, I don't know, I think we'd be better off not going quite that fast. It's, there's a lot of moving parts in it. Uh, so the first step is gonna be to get them on board. We, we've got some funding that will help cover those expenses. Uh, we didn't use but about half of the incentive, or the, uh, uh, funds that we set aside for the uh, facility feasibility studies. So we're gonna have about half, that was something of eighty thousand dollars. We've got probably half of that that will get us moving in this to cover, so until we get into the next year, and that way we'll we, we won't hold up and wait till October to get started.
Okay, if I have any questions?
I don't have a question.
Okay.
Uh, so you said your potential bond will be a thing. And the whole purpose of doing, moving and combining the city hall and police department is to create a space here. Do, do you think that, um, if the buildings were to grow on sale, on sales, will that money be, um, applied? Or enough to apply towards the construction?
Yeah, it'll be enough that, that we can certainly apply, and I expect that's what would happen, um, as, as we do that. Um, I don't have any, a part of what we will do is get, um, an appraisal on these facilities as part of uh, the due diligence and find out what we can expect. I think a lot of us can depend on is, I know the, the I don't know, but I would assume the police facility will come down. It's old and added on to, and it, I mean, there, it, it doesn't make any sense to keep, this one is newer, I don't know what they would use it for, but we'll, we'll get some, uh, some appraisals on it and sell, you know, I would assume we'd sell them off. Gonna put that, put that towards those expenses. Um, I'm thinking we're probably gonna be in the between five and seven million dollar range. Maybe not that much, I, you know, it's, construction costs are pretty high. Um, and, and that's part of the gamble, wait until November, because they could just go higher. If we don't go to November, go to May, that's one of the things to consider is how much more will, will it increase by the end? So there's a lot of moving parts to it. Um, this is just, uh, with your approval, we'll give, we'll get the terms and the scope identified in the first phase of it, and we'll get going.
Anybody else? Shelley, did you have anything you want me to say about the process?
Um, it was, it was pretty interesting to me, just kind of hearing, you know, not coming from a construction background, but just listening to, um, how the teams worked, yeah, how the architecture team, the construction team, how they communicated and how some of them didn't communicate. Um, which kind of helped us in our decision on narrowing it down, and it was really the, the two of them that we were looking at, we were splitting hairs on trying to, to figure out why one might be, you know, a, a better resource than the other. But the familiarity, you know, having a, a relationship already with the city, um, kind of was the, the typical.
Didn't they do some work for the school as well? You know, um, the ornament?
Oh, I, I don't know. If, I'm not aware of any that he's done, but he, he may have. He does a lot of stuff. They're a pretty big outfit.
And it was good to kind of see some of the, the samples of their work, which of course they had some beautiful grandeur and stuff like that. But they had some very modest facilities that still were very, very nice. So it's, you know, very budget-conscious, almost, but it looked like a nice facility that we could put around it.
And we did emphasize functionality, the, the functionality of the building and adaptability. As we grow, it's gonna need to adapt.
Right.
Um, one of the other things, uh, one of the design layouts that they just brought, that, you know, when you say perfect, it's but there was a, actually a park here included, just outside the city hall. Uh, some really nice things that we can do with the property.
Amber's gonna go get that, so y'all can look at it just to see.
Uh, it's.
Just a concept.
It, it is, it, it was really great. The newer buildings that they, they are doing, I mean, this, this, like Shelley said, some of them were just gorgeous, but to me, they were, they were not what fits the city.
That's what I was gonna say, aren't they going to try to give the city some kind of, um, style?
Yeah, we've talked about that. We've talked about the railroad, the history of the railroad, and, uh, you know, maybe, maybe the building takes on some sort of a train depot look. These guys are incredibly creative. Um, what, what will, the process is that they will, once we get them on board, they'll come in and meet with each department head. They'll meet with city council members to talk about what they want, how much space they need. They're gonna talk about, they're gonna look at growth, and do we add a few offices now? We've also told them that we want the building to be expanded, so, so it'll be designed so that we can add on to it. Uh, we've got plenty of room, and this is just kind of a concept they threw together to just to give us an idea of what we could do on that property. We didn't ask for it, they, they just did it.
Yeah.
It would be, uh, it'd be nice to have one, Jay. The functionality wasted space, uh, roads for expansion, those are all things that are key.
Right.
In a growth process like this, we're looking at, you know, some potential.
What we're gonna do also is, we're gonna bring on board a PR firm that works for cities, that helps put together community meetings, uh, town halls to talk about uh, what we're looking for, things that, you know, get ideas from them to our existing facilities, so they can kind of see firsthand why this is happening. They, they did that in Alito. Randall Scott is doing the new, um, city hall, police station in Alito. It's a, I think, twenty-two million dollar project is what they, they did.
Zero resistance.
Zero resistance, I mean, the whole city was.
But they're all so stoned.
Yeah.
Alito didn't have its own police department, so they're, they're doing the combined city hall, police department, all in one building. And that's, that's how they approached it, was, hey, look, we have the police department, we got a building for them. And if you've been in Alito, you know it's grown by leaps and bounds. So they needed a new city hall as well, and.
And they, they designed it, they designed that building around it. There was a tree that they didn't want touched.
Hundred and fifty foot tree.
Yeah, it's a really old, I guess, oak tree, I think is what they said it was, and so they laid everything out where that tree's kind of the centerpiece.
What facility was it? They were talking about, there was a facility that they built, they came into that town for like three days and just kind of immersed themselves in the city and the culture and the architecture, and they really pull out key pieces and do little neat, like touches on the building that kind of ties it in with the community or the history of the community.
That was, uh.
What's the one where the, was it burning?
Burning, yes. Or something like that, yeah.
I think one of the other pieces as far as, you know, we're talking about, is it something to do at all? Is, you know, not just selling these buildings or funding it, but giving this place back to the downtown level.
Yes, true, yeah.
But definitely want to, to, you know, living in a property that's not taking away from the tax base, anxiety off of the tax, giving something back into the tax base. Do you remember what?
But we already have locations.
Uh, yes, we own a little property that's just south of the, uh, church, kind of up behind the sign. Uh, in fact, our, our right of way is right, exit Sonic's.
It was on one.
The exit side, uh, up through there. You know, and the, the property that, that we're looking at does present some, some challenges, some issues that we have to be overcome. But that's what we would do, be doing there, the Sonic's process is, is overcoming those things. It was an interesting process. I've never been involved in anything like that before. Um, going through and scoring, I, I mean, every one of the people that we had was just, I mean, they were within one or two points of each other. It was, it was really well-presented stuff. One thing that I, I did like about Randall Scott, and this was just kind of a side story. Uh, he paid so much attention that when they tried to change materials to make it a bit less expensive on them, he threw a fit and wouldn't let him do it. Uh, he stays involved with every aspect of what's going on during that building process. The design-build team makes it a lot easier because they have that open communication. So, uh, Mike did an excellent job getting the, the information from these people. Uh, I think we got a really good, a really good wide field to look at. We did choose this, this group because we think they're gonna do a really good job for us. Any else, any questions?
You be putting out a memo just when, when you decide when, when you're gonna go with the other facility?
Yes, yes. And, and I would imagine we'll rent something to, where we can all load up, or we'll maybe get a one of the churches to provide us one of their.
We got a church.
Yeah, we, we've got one too, that we could probably get ahold of, but also, i- if y'all are interested, I have several of these uh, books that has pictures of what these guys have done. If y'all wanna thumb through them, we have to keep some of them, so I, I can't give them to you, but uh, we, we've got, we have to retain a couple of them, but if you wanna thumb through and look at some of their projects, we're happy to let you take a look at it.
I, uh, make a motion, we accept this, uh, agreement with the Randall Scott and J.D. Dunn Construction.
I'll say, all right, that's your answer. Okay, so, my, the motion, Shelley seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, let, let me just pick one quick here. We're going to authorize it, like, to negotiate a contract.
To negotiate, yeah.
Assistant contract.
Yeah.
Okay, great. You'll get that back probably next month. Make that motion.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Six zero. Okay, item number three, uh, discussion on regulations on lot sizes from city and family residential district. Our one is requested by Mr. Danny Turpin.
T on line.
Um, Mr. Turpin's not here this evening. Basically what, what Mr. Turpin is, is looking at is increasing the minimum lot size for plan developments. Uh, I had heard he turned out, I have an acre as, as the size he wanted to go to. Uh, if it's okay with everybody, we'll take this, uh, the next month and give Mr. Turpin a chance to show up and, and present his, his information. Any objection? Okay.
I've got a question. What, what brought him to bring this up? Why did he bring this?
I think.
Is he wanting to develop, or is he on board?
No, he's a citizen. He actually ran for, for council, uh, a year ago, and.
He just thought this would be.
He just wanted, we need to, to address this.
Good.
So I think that's a question that would be best directed at Mr. Turpin.
Is he asking tonight because?
He, he was notified, he, he knew it was on the agenda.
Yes, sir, I notified him in person and also emailed him and asked him to submit any documentation or research he would like for y'all to look at in advance.
Is there a reading, uh, document? I mean, just let him come back if you come back.
That's on the minute.
Well, I think, yeah, I think you just wanted that conversation.
If he approaches again, we'll put it back on the table. Okay. Okay, uh, at this time, uh, we are going to recess to exact this session, to have a discussion with our, our attorney, going to item four. Uh, so we're going to recess at seven sixteen. Call us, be back to order. Seven thirty. Okay, item number four, under the regular agenda, discuss, consider and possible action on development agreements between city and municipal and property owners on parcels located on Oak Lane Drive and County Road nine oh eight, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Mr. Pecop. Anything else you wanna say?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a proposed motion for whoever would like to make it. It would be, I move to authorize the city manager to ex, to execute development agreements pursuant to chapter forty-three and chapter two twelve, the technical rule of government.
Thank you. Price time, Luke. Mr. Kidd seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six zero. Alright. Staff reports, if I have any questions on any of the staff reports.
Um, I had a question about, so the, the plan of the park. Right. Um, how did the park get in that bad a condition? And do we need to hire more parks?
We were kind of looking at, a lot of the, the stuff out there is just well, yeah, we found some little tent community out there that we're, like, we're, they go be annex those people. Um, we, we had some of that, the, there's, it's, it's mostly a problem during the wintertime. It's just vandalism, stuff that goes on out the part of, we've got some issues with baseball association with the concession stand things. Stuff that's in the agreement that they take care of doesn't always happen. Uh, and, and the baseball side of it is very heavily used. There's usually something going on seven days a week. It wasn't designed for that. And a lot of the work is just got away from them, and there's, those guys take care of all the city facilities also, so they're not bringing in a bunch of contractors. So they, they do way more than just the park.
Yeah.
Um, and then one of the guys has been out for several weeks with surgery, uh, we, we brought some people in to help. And it's just some stuff got away from, um, more than just the three can keep up with.
What I was, what I was thinking is, um, do we have any, uh, PM checklist that maybe Kristen could, could come up with, uh, to quarterly go and, and go around and, and kind of check off that he's
Well.
inspections, like, like go and look at restaurants, look at the outlined areas where transit is maybe, look at the tents, and look at the things that might, may need some addressing, uh, walk the trails, see if the trails need to be trimmed, you know, maybe it's. things that might may need some addressing, walk the trails, see if the trails need to be trimmed, you know, maybe a checklist or something.
There's not one currently, Vince and I have had some conversations about that and we're there are some changes that we're working on that'll be reflected in next year's budget that will give him more time for some of that administrative stuff. But also make use of his construction background, there's just so much going on, a lot of our buildings are getting really old. And that park is nearly ten years old now too and it's.
Even if it, even if it led to a cleanup project. But at least it would be something that we could be notified and say, hey, this is, this is all cropped up. We don't have the manpower to handle it or the time. We need to put together a project and we can act on it, maybe ahead of schedule instead of getting it
Well, and we
so far gone.
We're, what we're trying to do is gear up and and work those details out for this one, because we've got two more fixed to come on board. They're not that big and they're not going to have that many facilities, but there's one in Cooper Valley that we already have dedicated. We'll be funding improvement some this year, some next year to get that park online and then if Joshua Meadows in the face that they're currently going back and forth with Jay Sato over getting put in, that one has the park in that neighborhood. And it's a little bigger, it's, I think it's five or six acres. But it's not, I mean, it's the same way, it's not going to have the amenities like this one does, but it'll have a walking trail, there may be some you know, we're work, we're looking at a, an outdoor gym agreement that a company would come in and put all these outdoor implements, that's probably going to go in the big park, but it might be a fit for one of the others too. A lot of this park plan that's dedicated, it's got some easements on it, so building permanent structures is sometimes a little difficult, but there's going to be pocket parks. Okay, and we're doing a grant with this group, who's the patron part of it?
It's through the National Fitness Campaign, but the grant piece of it, it's fifty thousand and it's provided by Blue Prostitution.
It's a pretty neat little deal.
Awesome.
Got about, what, eight or ten stations, workout stations.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put the pad down and then they'll come in and fill everything.
Sure.
For me to shut up.
I did have another question, I don't know if the staff report would be spot asking, but the Cooper Valley addition that they're putting in right now, did they did they put down that they were going to remove every single tree out of that addition? Because they sucked up trees, this is really not something we need to discuss at this point. It's not germane to the. Well, how about let's put it on the agenda, because I'd like to, I'd like some answers as to that addition's authority to remove trees.
I I can give you those either at the next meeting or after this one.
All right. We'll wait and make that a future agenda.
Okay.
And if anybody has any questions about, any other questions about staff reports, we will go, is there anything else you'd like to say on future agenda? We are going to be hopefully having the waste management information next month?
Yes, yes, the survey, I completed the survey this afternoon, so I will be posting that tomorrow. And also electronic newsletter will go out, hopefully tomorrow, I T's coming to work on my computer, so if I have time, if not, I'll try to get it done tomorrow afternoon.
He can't read anyway.
Just, just to get a quick update on that, they they're working on a contract with a new I T company and hopefully we will be getting this mess fixed in the next.
And then the trash thing is what we talked about last month.
Yes, that's correct. Anybody have anything else? Then at seven twenty, we're adjourned.